I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To call this meeting Westbury City Council, the order, roll call please.
Crowner.
Here.
Rowley.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
Lees.
Here.
West.
Here.
Okay, we need to perfect the approved agenda.
So move.
Support, motion with support, any discussion? Roll call.
Rowley.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Lees.
Aye.
West.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Motion carried, consent agenda.
Motion to approve is presented.
Support.
Motion with support to approve consent agenda items one through eight, which are amendments to a regular city council meeting on March 6, 2013, approve a taxi service renewal for A to C taxi and delivery service, approve finance officer Sattler's attendance at the spring IMFOA conference, approve a payment to Bauer Bill, approve payment to Burlington Municipal Water Works, approve payment to City of Burlington, approve payment to Des Moines County Regional Waste Commission, and approve the claims as presented in the amount of $223,274.23. That breaks down the general fund, $51,367.96. Road use, $11,004.50. LMI set aside, $102,405. Water, $36,018.30. The Beavertale escrow, 1975, Westwood Hills escrow, 1975, Witsman escrow, 1975, sewer, $15,863.75. Risk management, self-insurance, $4,645.99. Flex account, $1,712.52. Agency fund, $177.55 and the 4th of July celebration of $19.41. Any discussion? Roll call.
Stewart.
Aye.
Lees.
Aye.
West.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Rowley.
Aye.
Motion carried. Committee reports, finance, Rod, you got any?
Uh, not really. I was wanting to ask Mike about one thing off that claims list. I didn't want to pull it off there or anything. Down towards the bottom of there, there's a, or maybe Leslie knows, says West Burlington firefighters FF donation, $299.70.
That's, most of the firefighters volunteered, they can contribute back 7% of their salary to the firefighters association that gets run through payroll, so it's with the new system, it's thrown in the name list. It goes through payroll, then it hits accounts payable. It's kinda like the Illinois withholding and all that, it goes through there. It's a deduction to the employee's paycheck.
Okay. I just, I hadn't noticed seeing that before and I-
With the new system.
Okay. Alright, thanks. Other than that, I don't have anything new for finance, sir.
You may have anything for finance. Right, streets.
No, I don't have anything and, oh Randy is here. And Randy may have something. The only thing I have is we've been doing a little patching the last couple of weeks. The streets are pretty well taken care of. Gonna wait till it warms up and dries up and we'll start in on the alleys. And we're gonna wait till after this weekend to see if we get the snow they're talking about and then we'll probably be done with our, put our snow removal equipment away. So, that's all I have.
I would make one quick comment that a little patching would be a slight understatement. You've been doing a lot of patching. And I did have one businessman, Mr. Steve Ritter down at, Ritter's comment about what a good job you did on Broadway Street, just so that you know.
Pass that along.
Okay, just so that you know.
Thanks.
Anybody else have anything for streets? Public safety.
I don't have anything.
I got a few things. Police department just finished up filing for the governor's traffic safety bureau grant for the 2013-2014 year. We kinda averaged four employees working overtime for 190 hours for strictly traffic enforcement. We also applied for equipment in that grant for one radar unit to replace an aging radar unit that we have. I'd also like to extend my thanks and the department's thanks to the Iowa State Penitentiary for the use of their K-9 program. Last Thursday, Iowa State Penitentiary sent two K-9 units and their handlers to assist West Burlington Police Department in a locker check at the West Burlington Junior/Senior High School. This is the second search this year and I was happy to report that we found no illegal drugs were discovered on the school grounds in both of the surprise searches. Right now Sergeant Ryan, Officer Covert and I are currently down at the auditorium taking Alice training. Alice is a training to fight against an active shooter. First responders are the people that are there at the active shooters. And I'm happy to report that the West Burlington school system has went through the same training that we have and today Southeastern Community College is there. So hopefully we'll all get together and come up with a good program for our schools and our businesses. And lastly, I'd like to invite the council, the mayor and the citizens of West Burlington to their graduation on Tuesday, March 26 at 2:30 PM held at the West Burlington Elementary School. This is Officer Covert's first year, first dare graduation and he's done a wonderful job teaching and keeping our students safe. Any questions?
Chief, would those dogs detect residue if there was odor on the kids' jackets, that sort of thing, or?
It will detect some residue, correct. Even at light.
They didn't, nothing?
They, the first time, they, there was absolutely nothing. The dogs did hit on one, but ended up being nothing. On the second search.
You think there's less pot being smoked, or that they're just not bringing it into the schools?
I think they're keeping off school grounds. I think with the surprise searches that we've set up, the kids all know we're there. So they have no idea what time we're coming or where. I'd just like to commend the school for letting us help and trying to keep drugs off the school grounds.
That's good.
Well, it's a whole lot tougher to get in and out of that school, those schools than it was just a couple of short years ago too. That's good.
Now, that's an amazing fact with what you hear.
Mm-hmm.
You would suspect if you just read the paper or listened to the news that you would have found something.
Yeah.
So that's great. I mean, that's a wonderful thing.
I mean, we have found some in past years, but-
That's a wonderful thing.
This is great that this program is there and it's great that the penitentiary allows two of their officers and two of their canines come up to assist. Also, I'd like to also thank Des Moines County Sheriff's Department sent their SO and Southeast Iowa Narcotics Task Force had two people there also helping.
Okay. I wonder if, you can't go in the parking lot probably?
Yes, we do search the vehicles in the car, in the parking lot too, and there was absolutely no indications there by the dogs that there was.
Wow.
They don't hit on just regular cigarette smoke, do they?
No.
Probably a few of them out there. Any else for chief? Mike?
Under buildings, Klein Center passed their federal and city inspection. They did get a certification of occupancy and I think they're starting to move their patients in today. I'm also working with a contractor on MediaCom's new location for their site. They've been looking since the fire last spring and we're working on code requirements and we should have a building permit request anytime. On the fireside, the SCBA testing, the bids will go, come to the council on April the 3rd. The testing is set for June the 3rd. And the pump test is being scheduled now for the two pumpers in the truck. We are having maintenance issues with the ball valves on engine two and three. We have new kits ordered and they have to be installed prior to the testing. The testing will be done in May, which includes the oil changes to the pumps and any pump adjustments as needed and the pump test itself.
That's all I've got.
Anything for the chiefs? Utilities, Carol?
I don't have anything. Randy?
Just a couple of things. Next week, we're gonna try to disconnect the water and sewer at the new public works facility site and we, I've been talking to Dave Stocklasse more and more all the time. I think we're looking at possibly our next meeting to look at the updated plans to be on April 4th. Everything's moving along smoothly on that and staff is working very closely with them to try to make sure that we come out with the best building that we can get.
What else for utilities? Sanitation?
I don't have anything. Randy?
We did a pressure test at the West Lift Station last week. We've got all our pumps back now. The air release valve has been ordered and probably in the next three to four weeks, they'll be installing that at the West Lift Station and then hopefully we can close that project out after that.
How about spring cleanup? Have you thought about that?
Kelly and I talked about that a little bit and we're probably gonna do it sometime in May. We haven't nailed down a date yet, but it'll be probably the first couple of weeks of May.
Actually had somebody ask me so.
Okay. Other staff report. Kelly, you ain't going on?
No.
Wesley? Saw it's coming in on your vacation. Okay, this time I'll open the floor up to anyone wishing to address council matters or not on the agenda tonight. Please come forward. Is nobody rising? We'll go to new business. Item number one is to consider upgrade to the traffic lights at Gear and Agency. See, looking at changing those from the regular loop system to a camera system and Randy's got some prices there. An estimated cost of about $35,092.
We've had really good luck with the cameras at Mount Pleasant Gear. It'll actually be a savings for us, especially in the long run by going with the cameras. We'll do away with the loops. We've already had one, a couple loops fail on agency and there's so many loops in that intersection that I see a lot of problems in the future. The main reason we've decided, I've talked to Jim Connor and I've talked to Dick Palmer, by updating the controller, we should be able to go with the flashing yellow light on the left turn lanes. I don't know if you folks have ever seen that, but a lot of cities are going to that. On the left turn lane, when it goes from the green arrow, there's a yellow, yellow will start to flash to let you know that you're about to lose the green and it, I think it'll be an advantage. I mean, the whole system, it's, if we're gonna go this far, I think we should just update the whole intersection so we don't have to do anything with it for quite some time.
And then that would go to a green round after the flashing?
There'll be, yeah, it'll still go to the round.
Okay.
But the yellow will flash to let you know that you're gonna lose the arrow.
Yeah, okay.
Where, I mean, we're not gonna do that right now, but we'll have that capability.
That's good. What, where's the money coming from?
We have enough left over in that GEO bond. We've got about $47,000 net GEO bond.
Okay.
Those cameras might serve a double effort. They won't know if it's for changing signals or if it's going through that red light.
Yes.
I see Kara do it every so often.
I was just going to make that perfectly clear that these were not cameras that worried about speeding or running lights.
Those cameras kinda look the same, so it just might-
We'll tell everybody that. Cause that's the next thing we'd hear. We need a motion on this, ma'am?
Yeah.
Motion to approve. Yeah, I would make that motion.
I think Rod made the motion. Rod made the motion.
Second.
Second. Any motion with support? Any other discussion? Roll call.
Lees.
Aye.
West.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Rowley.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number two is to consider payment front renter for engineering services at the middle school, $975.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support, any discussion? Roll call.
West.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Rowley.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Lees.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number three is to consider Officer Angela Bona's resignation from the police department. Angela's been serving the police department for about the last 15 years and we appreciate her service.
We're gonna miss ya.
Yeah, you can step up, say, step up, sit down, have a chair, relax.
Mayor House, West Burlington Council members, City Attorney Gifford, who's not there, and Chief Newberry, is with a very heavy heart and great sadness that affected immediately. I am resigning from the West Burlington Police Department due to medical issue. It's been a great honor to serve the citizens of West Burlington for the past 14 and a half years. Throughout my career, I have strived to treat everyone with a level of respect and represent the city of West Burlington positively and perform each task to the best of my ability. I have seen our citizens at some of the worst times in their lives. I hope I was able to provide them with a sense of safety, security and compassion during these times. I've also met with many people which I never thought our paths would cross. Without those meetings, I would not be the person I am today. I have received an education about life that most people will never get to experience. I have great hope for each person that has impacted my career growing. I would like to commend the police department for leading the way in the technical age of policing in our area. The equipment we use daily has improved drastically and ensures the officers accessibility to vital information. That has made the job not only safer, but very beneficial in conducting investigations and daily tasks. I hope this is something that continues in the future. Citizens of West Burlington should be proud of the great team of police officers they have working for them to ensure their safety. It has been an honor to serve each and every person over the past years. Not just the officers, but all of the West Burlington City employees, West Burlington Police Department, Burlington Police Department, Des Moines County Sheriff's Office, Des Moines County Correctional Center, Department of Health and Safety in multiple federal agencies. I would say that my greatest achievements in my career was to serve on, serve as a board member on the Iowa Law and Order Academy Council for a lucky reason to represent the West Burlington Police Department and municipalities of 50,000 citizens. I gained a vast knowledge about many aspects of law enforcement beyond the everyday duty of a patrol officer. I would like to specifically thank Chief Newberry for all his guidance throughout my career and the things he taught me about being a police officer. I'm grateful, thank you. I'm grateful I had you for my mentor during my tenure with the department. I wish all the officers a safe and successful career. I would like to ask officers to follow me, realize how lucky they are to work for such a great city and police department. Thank you.
Thank you, Angie.
Thank you, Angela.
Don't take off.
I got something I wanna give you. Chief gave me these right before the meeting and I wanna present them to you, which are just, it's not very much right now, but I know he's got a couple of other things that he's gonna give you. But it's a retired police officer badge. Couple of them. That, I don't know what'll buy ya a cup of coffee maybe.
It's government worth.
Thank you very much for all your service.
Thank you.
Hope you leave a copy of that letter in the squad room.
Angela, thank you. I got a lot of good stuff. Your rookie years, remember?
That's the video that's next, isn't it?
It's a tape. There is a tape of our first chase.
Actually, you're not retired yet because nobody's made a motion to approve this.
Maybe you read it too soon. I make a motion to accept Angela's resignation with heavy heart.
Second, the motion.
A motion with support. Is there any other discussion? Roll call.
Crowner.
Aye.
Rowley.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Lees.
Aye.
West.
Motion carried. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Angela.
It's a tough profession to be in, especially-
Can't get a copy of that.
No matter if it's a big city or a small city. Item number four is to consider authorizing the police chief to start the process of hiring a police officer.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support, any discussion? Roll call.
Rowley.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Lees.
Aye.
West.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Item number five is to discuss options for selling lots in the middle school subdivision. Specifically, Dan's memo here is talking about the LMI lot. Got a few options there. First, I wanna, let's set a date for the three other ones. And see what happens, what falls out. I think we're pretty much got everything ready to go with those. Just waiting on some-
I don't think Kelly assured me of that. When I spoke to Kelly earlier today, I'm not sure she was assured of that.
Well, I feel that way cause that's what I hear from our city attorney last time we sat down there.
Okay, well, yeah.
It won't take long, it won't take long.
The only thing I, Mr. Bear, the only thing I said to Kelly is we ought to allow like a month in there. From the day we say we're gonna sell them till the day we sell them, ought to be roughly a month. And other than that, I don't care. You know, I think they need to be advertised for roughly a month so people can prepare and think about what they need to do and round up their 15 or 20% down, whatever Mitch decides we want, or we decide we want, or whatever.
So is May 1st too early of a date?
No, not, I don't think it is, but, I mean, that gives Kelly another week and two and still a month to advertise them, you know.
I mean, we're getting, once you get into May, you're starting getting into-
No, we need to do it as soon as we can. I just, like I said, I visited with Kelly earlier today and I wasn't sure. Well, Mayor, we'll be having a council meeting May 1st, should we do it the day before, the day after, for any reason?
On what?
Selling the lots?
No, just-
No, that's to start every, or, oh no, just-
If we promote April-
And sell them?
And sell them in May.
Yeah, but I'm just saying-
Yeah, council meetings what, like?
Day 1st.
I thought it was a-
Yeah, it's a Wednesday.
Is it a Wednesday?
Yep, I just thought.
So would we wanna do the, sell the lots the day before or the day after the council meeting, or the day of the council meeting?
We can-
Before. It may take a while. I mean, it could take a little while to do everything, I don't-
And we were thought, we were talking about if we do it, we're doing it here, are we doing?
I don't know if that's what Mitch decided or not. It seemed to me it'd be just as easy to do it here and have Mitch in the paperwork call right here where you got a copying machine and everything you need and-
Yeah, he's open to that.
Yeah, Kelly would have all the stamps and anything she would need.
You might have to talk to him.
Well, I thought doing it, the meeting before the-
The 1st?
Second meeting in May then.
The Wednesday?
The 8th.
Give it more time or-
Or you can, you can do it on the May, on May 1st and approve at the following meeting.
We might need to check with Mitch to make sure he's available.
We have a meeting May 1st?
May 1st and the 15th.
So that would be like a great time to, for us to put in our last plug and advertisement for it and I'd say the first day Mitch is free after that, you ought to just be here and do it. There you go. I don't think it needs to be a-
No, no.
A date or day specific. I mean, you know, there's auctions every day of the week, so, I, you know, I think any day after that-
Say, sell between the 1st and the 15th.
Yeah, there you go. You know, and whatever fits his schedule. We can plug it that last time on May 1st at our council meeting and remind people that, you know, hey, by that time, we should have a date from Mitch and say, now don't forget, you know. Sell those lots on the 3rd or the 5th or the whatever. Cause that's the biggest deal, is just getting the word out that we really are going to do this and we are moving ahead and they are available and you need to come this day prepared to buy them. Bring your checkbook.
Sounds good.
Agreeable?
Yep.
Now, the second issue, the one with already LMI, the low to moderate income lot. Tell from Dan's memo, five different options there, which one you guys like the most. I think we need to work that thing out tonight.
So, and I know Winnie did this, that he hadn't heard back from Sarah yet.
No, we haven't.
But we still haven't heard anything?
Well, she has, last I talked with her Monday and nobody's been responding from the state.
Yeah.
She just sent me an email today and said she still had not heard.
But she has, she has two other ones that are in the system that haven't started yet. So she's gotta get extensions for those.
When I talked to Mr. Gifford about it yesterday, it didn't seem to be any more clear than it was a couple of weeks ago.
What we talked about before.
But with the information that we have now, number two on here is my preferred. Me too.
Me too.
It's just the easiest. Just have Mitch put it in the contract.
Auction the lot with the stipulation-
Yeah.
And the real estate contract that the house and lot must sell for $150,000 or less.
Yep. I think that's just as easy. That way they all four sell, sell basically the same way. The one just has an extra stipulation that, you know, if a contractor buys it, he can't put up a Taj Mahal. You know, which nobody's gonna do there anyway. And Mayor, we don't wanna do this the same day just because we don't know enough, right? Is that what you're thinking is right now?
I think we can all, I think they can all be auctioned off at the same time.
Yeah. Let's do that. Yeah, we do them all at the same time.
Just that when we advertise this in the next four weeks, that one lot has got, is gonna have this stipulation on it.
Okay. And that's what Kelly was worried about. I know today when I spoke with her is getting the details because the minute, the minute you tell the public, we're gonna sell those lots, May 5th, they're gonna be calling up here wanting, well, how's that work and what do I gotta do and how much money I gotta have and, you know. So I think that's her concern and I understand it. She, she needs to have all the I's and T's dotted and crossed and- Well, that sentence right there should say it all to anybody that's inquiring. Yeah.
Okay, now that you mentioned down payment, what are you expecting, 10%, 20% standard?
I would think 10 to 20. Typical house auctions, you get 10, 15, 20 depending on, you know, the, you're gonna be talking lots that are selling $15,000 to $30,000. So 10% is only 15 bucks. That's not, not real binding there. You know, people could walk away from that fairly easily where if you do 15 or 20, it makes it a little more secure, I think, maybe. I, I don't think it matters, but-
30 days, the-
30 days, they'll, you know, to close roughly on or about. Typical auction language, on or about 30 days, they'll have to have the rest of it.
What happens if you get somebody in there that wants just flat out bids and then can't get the financing?
Well, you should have- Well, then you're gonna keep their 15 or 20% down.
That's why I wanna-
Which is, which is the reason you want that to be stiff enough-
Yeah.
To bring only serious people in here bidding on, you know. That's the reason you don't do it and say, hey, write me a check for $500 and I'll hold it for you. You don't do that because then, then you're back to having to advertise a lot again and stuff, so. It's like Ernest, man. So I don't, I don't care whatever you pick. I- Pick 15. 15's fine, yeah. 15's fine with me. 30 on or about, that'll take care of weekends. Yep.
Then the other thing I wanna get clear tonight is which one of those lots, is the LMI lot? And I don't know if we actually ever numbered them, 1, 2, 3, 4, did we?
Kelly did somehow, no?
They're numbered. Steve numbered them 1, being closest to Houston.
Okay, so the furthest south lot is 1?
Not to Houston, I'm sorry, to Mount Pleasant.
They started this way.
They started-
Start here with 1, 2, 3, 4. 4 has a tree.
Working your way up.
No.
We talked about-
1 has a tree.
Lot 2.
1 has a tree? Well, that'd be closest to Mount Pleasant.
That'll be 2, 2 has the tree.
2 has a tree, but it's not going down.
Yeah, it's gonna go down.
It'll be going for that.
Tree, tree on lot two's gonna be gone. It's not good. It's not a good tree.
Somebody's driveway might wanna end up right in the middle.
Oh. Randy made that power decision this week.
I saw the guys getting rid of the old driveways today.
We discussed making lot two, second one in, the LMI lot, for no, for no solid reason other than we had to pick one, and we discussed making that be it.
Yeah.
You don't want it to be one of the two corner ones.
Correct.
So, it has to be one of the two inner ones.
Either two or three, yeah.
Sounds good to me. Okay. The one that used to have a tree. Alrighty.
It's now a.
Okay, well, proceed.
What else, Kelly, are you worried about on that? Is there something else that, you need some kind of general consensus?
That's, get all this together and then.
And I know you gotta get with Mitch and get him to do it and so on and so forth. Okay.
Okay.
Do you need any kind of motions or any of that kind of stuff, or are you okay?
I think we got the guidance here.
Good.
Cause we'll, they'll all come back in contracts to you anyway. Alrighty. Item number six is to consider tentative union contract agreements for the Westboro Police Department and the Public Works Department. From Dan's memo, you can see what the highlights were for both of them. Pretty much the, uh, Public Works highlights, we're gonna, sick leave will be converted to PTO, uh, which is the unused PTO converts the vacation of major sick leave. Bank is full. Uh, vacation carryover increases from forty to eighty hours. Life insurance increases from thirty thousand to fifty thousand. Uh, two employees may be paid ten dollars a month for certified pool operation certification. Uh, wage increases, it's a three-year contract. First year, three percent, second year, three percent, third year, zero percent. Health insurance deductibles increases from three hundred, six hundred to five hundred thousand. Uh, the employee share health insurance premium increases capped at twenty, twenty percent of a hundred and forty dollars per year, which is kind of, uh, difficult to explain, but I'll, I'll try real quick. Um, at the present time, the employees are paying a certain percentage of the insurance of their family premiums, uh, which is around a hundred and thirty dollars right now at, at this time. What will happen with, under this new contract, if the premiums go up, say like if they go up at, uh, a hundred dollars, then twenty percent of that a hundred dollars would be, uh, twenty dollars. That would be added on to that one thirty-one. If the premiums go up a hu, to a hundred and fifty dollars, the cap then kicks in of a hundred and forty, which instead of the thirty dollars additional in premiums, it would only be twenty-eight dollars, and that twenty-eight dollars is the max over the three-year period per year or if premiums go up. The other thing is if they go down, they also, uh, reap the benefits of that. Uh, the city will pay an additional twenty-five dollars for family dental insurance, uh, for a total of fifty dollars. That's the Public Works highlights. The, uh, Police highlights, additional shifts, maybe work in four-hour increments. Uh, not required to work on scheduled day off before vacation. Uh, physical fitness incentive tests in May or June. Wage increases of, uh, same contract, three-year contract, three percent first year, three percent second year, zero percent third year. Uh, health insurance deductibles increases from three hundred, six hundred to five hundred thousand. Uh, the employee share of the health insurance premium increases capped at twenty percent of a hundred and forty dollars, same as Public Works. Uh, city pays for additional twenty-five dollars for family dental for a total of fifty dollars. Same as Public Works, and life insurance increases from thirty thousand to fifty thousand. Those are what, uh, bargaining committees have tentatively agreed to, and this is what we, city has also, uh, negotiation has agreed to with, uh, mediation, through mediation.
You want them together or separately, or what do you wish?
You can do them together as one motion.
I would make a motion to approve both the Public Works and the Police, uh, Union contracts. Support.
There's motion with support. Remember, this is tentative, because we're still gonna, uh, have to go through the, each side'll get the contracts, and we'll have to go through them, read them side by side, and make sure that everything's in there, that everything was agreed to. And the unions send that over to Dan this afternoon, and he forwarded the email to me and the Leslie, so we got those that we can, and they also got them at the bargaining, uh, units, so they can look at and make sure everything's there.
But assuming nobody's made any mistakes, these, these agreements have already been reached with the Union, so, okay.
And they've been ratified by them.
Okay. Well, I don't know who all was involved, but I guess I just, quickly before we vote, would like to thank Dan and Leslie and you, Mayor, whoever else, and, and obviously our Union employee representatives for getting this all worked out and done. Uh, it's good to have it done for another three years.
Thank you. Roll call.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Stewart?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Wes?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Motion carried. Any old business? Anyone wishing to address council matters we did discuss or didn't discuss tonight, please rise. Entertain the motion to adjourn.
Also move.
Support.
All over the favor.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Makes adjourn. Thank you.